Hello, everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting. May I have an approval of tonight's agenda?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Tonight's presentations and discussions of interest to the committee. I'd like to welcome our newest interim director of special education, Sheila Reardon. Thank you. Thank you for coming to our island.
Very warm welcome from everyone I've met. From my Nancy, everybody has been absolutely so friendly and wonderful.
Well, thank you. We are very appreciative. Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on to presentation of the Island Cup trophy. May we have Chris, Mr. Maury, join us?
Yes, I am.
November 26th, Saturday, November 26th was the playing of the 38th Annual Island Cup Game. And obviously, we're very excited to come back to the island with the cup. Little history on the Island Cup game. Nantucket started playing Martha's Vineyard football back in 1953. The Island Cup came into play in 1978. Then-head coach Vito Capizo decided it would be a good idea to make this rivalry game a little more juicy by putting a nice trophy on the table. And so, since that date moving forward, this game has been playing and been known as the Island Cup Game. Nantucket has not won an Island Cup since 2002. So, that's one of the things that makes this so special. Nantucket has not beaten the Vineyard in the Island Cup Game since 1995.
That was the year I graduated. Just fought.
On the venue. Chris, you mean on the venue, right?
On the venue.
On the venue. Right. On the road. So, November 26th was a very special day for our entire football program. It's great to have the cup back where what we call to bring it back home. We have some of our seniors and our head coach with us today. Brian Ryder, our head football coach, becomes only the second coach in Nantucket's school history to win an Island Cup Game. The only other Nantucket coach that ever won an Island Cup Game was Vito Capizo, who we all know was around for quite some time. I'm going to let our seniors just step up and introduce themselves.
Kyle Frazee.
Connor McKenzie.
Bert Keas.
Ben Redford.
Corey Ryder.
We have a couple of additional seniors that couldn't be with us tonight, Travis Demby and JT Gambroni. Obviously, our senior leadership is the kind of thing we look with with all our sports programs. These guys were the leader of this team this year. A team that had not only a great year by winning the Island Cup, but had a great year overall, record-wise. This team, this group, won their first, Nantucket's first-ever playoff game since the state went to the new playoff system and came that close to moving on in state competition with an overtime game with Seacock. So, we're obviously very proud, not only of the gentleman standing behind me, but the entire team. And just wanted to have an opportunity for you to get to see them and see the trophy. Now, the original trophy that was the Island Cup actually got replaced last year because the original Island Cup was on the Vineyard too long and it was contaminated. It had actually gotten quite worn, so we did purchase a new trophy. And I was hoping to have that. It was bought last year. We were hoping that with the new trophy, we would have it in our hands last year. But thrilled to have it this year. And from what we've seen with our football program and their football program, we're hoping that it's going to stay here at home for a while.
Coach Ryder, would you like to make any comments or say a few words?
You know, I think all I want to add to what Mr. Maury said was it was great to watch this, not only this group of seniors, but this entire team work so hard towards a common goal and achieve that goal through hard work. And, you know, between hard work, commitment, and the work ethic they've been displaying, you know, that's going to really help them down the road after their football days are done. So, it's been a pleasure and hopefully, we can continue taking those strides next year and maybe keep the Island Cup here and maybe win another playoff game. So, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
One other point that I'd like to make, and as we talk about our athletic programs, we're always talking about pride and tradition, which happens to be a non-macabre. Our football team in particular, there's a lot of tradition behind our football program and not just from a standpoint of the school and the program, but the community. And one of the great things about that Saturday, November 26th, was the crowd that went to the Vineyard to support these guys. Nantucket had over 450 people standing on their sidelines to support our kids in this football game. We probably had, I'm not going to say as many, but close to as many as the Vineyard did understand. That's a great show for our community. I appreciate it. Well, Chris, I mean, I think they had fewer fans and they left early. Probably they left early. They definitely left. I think our football program, I think these kids, these young men, did a tremendous job. I think they were well-coached all season. They worked hard. They did a good job. Mashpee won the Super Bowl, but you know what? What's Mashpee's one-loss to us? And so, we're going to come back and get that from them. And I want to see us take it back, keep the cup next year. And you know, 42 to zip isn't enough. Next year, next year, we ought to go to 50. But again, I congratulate you guys. You worked hard. It's the penultimate team sport. Everybody has to, like the coach says, do your job.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Wait a second, will it be displaced in the front?
Actually, it doesn't fit in your trophy case, so.
Oh.
I think this school committee should have all touched it. I think it might be a senior class gifts there or something. New trophy case.
Yeah, of course.
Ooh, something to think about. All right. Thank you. Moving on to the NES presentation for Responsive Classroom.
Mrs. Kupich, do you want us to go down?
Probably easier to see.
Sure.
So, I did nothing but support these lovely ladies going to, and the community supported this, going to Responsive Classroom workshop in Washington, DC. And it generated from Gillian, who then went out and found some folks. Gillian and Laura have had a lot of training. Taylor and Grace Anne are newer. Taylor had the luxury of this gift that Nina found a few years back where we were able to send our brand-new teachers for a week of intensive Responsive Classroom. And Grace Anne has had what we've had in the building, so we tried to get a little blend. So, here to present about their trip to Washington, DC is Gillian Myers, first-grade teacher, Laura O'Vannion, first-grade teacher, Taylor Murphy, kindergarten teacher, and Grace Anne Tornavish, second-grade teacher.
Take the seats if you'd like.
Do you want to take the seats? Can you speak at the podium? Whatever you prefer. So, the guiding principles are right there. We'll just take a minute for you guys to read them, so we'll have to give them to you. So, we went to Washington, DC on Friday, November 21st and Saturday, the 22nd. It was the first teachers conference that Responsive Classroom has ever had, which was pretty amazing to be a part of. They've had an administrative one, but never one for teachers. And you could definitely feel that energy throughout the entire thing. There was a lot of excitement, a lot of engaged, happy learners. And there were 27 sessions over that day and a half, so it was also very busy. My big takeaways were that Responsive Classroom is the foundation for both the social and academic learning success for my students. And it was just nice to hear that again, that really, everything I do and how I do it, it's all about Responsive Classroom. And it's the venue for everything. It's the social, it's the academic, it's how I talk to parents, it's how I interact with my peers, it's how I talk to the bus driver. It's everything. It's all Responsive Classroom. The importance of really knowing your students, calling a parent at home and finding out if their child's okay, if they've been sick for a few days, talking to a mom when they come in and looked a shovelled, asking about homework, finding out about a divorce situation, everything, really knowing your child, every single child in your class intimately. And that goes in really well with the trauma. They introduced a new subset for Responsive Classroom because they kept on hearing over and over again, these five percenters, the five percenters that we can't reach in Responsive Classroom. Well, really, it's more like 50%. And then they were saying, well, really, it's 100% because so many children have been affected by some sort of trauma in their life. And they were saying everything from their bird dying to divorce, a death in the family. Whatever that child's trauma is, is really their trauma. And it can definitely impact their learning for a day-to-day basis throughout a school year or a school career. And just knowing your student and whatever that trauma is for them. The importance of knowing and taking care of each other as a staff, I really took that to heart. They were doing things like giving massage, this sounds weird, but they had like at the end, they had a massage table and they had, talking to different staff members. They had yoga classes at other schools and they had professional like pizza parties. I don't know. That sounds silly, but I really thought about taking care of the other people in the staff and recognizing what they need and how to help them be successful and happy and wanting to be at school. That was a big takeaway for me. And from that, we've been working with Caitlin Marku. She's been starting to do some yoga stuff with us. We've talked to the Culinary Arts Institute. They're thinking about doing some things with us. And just really knowing each other and supporting each other as a staff as well and making it a good, happy place for us so that then we can reflect that and be that for our students. And moving forward on what Kim had said, we took a look at what staff members have had no experience and kind of categorized everybody for RC1, RC2. And moving forward, we are looking at getting the people with no experience trained over this next chunk of time, whatever that might be.
Responsive Classroom was life-changing for me when I started 10 years ago, in school and out of school. It's just given me so many tools for all of the reasons that Gillian talked about. My major takeaways were just being there. There's this amazing spirit and a calm energy where the expectations are really high, but it's almost like they know you're going to get there. They expect your best. And I wanted to absorb it all so I could bring it to my students. That's a big piece of it is the energy and the tone that you're using all the time. So, that's something I just, you need to almost be refilled up every now and then in Responsive Classroom, and we want to do that for each other. Oh, this is something, Responsive Classroom is very proactive in helping students to meet their best. And I thought anxiety was kind of a small portion of the population, but what we learned there was almost everyone has a varying degree of anxiety somehow on some day. And I had a story that an adult can relate to. So, one day, many years ago, I was taking the Miller analogies off-island with some coworkers. And we came into the, it was desks before computers, very serious. The proctor was waiting till exactly, you know, 9:00 AM to start. And I realized that I left my wedding rings in the hotel room. And I was stuck in this very strict place. So, imagine a student who has this thing on their mind, you know, and you're saying, "No, no, put that away for now. Do this." And it just helps me to have sensitivity towards my students. That was really nice presentation. The last, my last major takeaway was at the conference, they kind of termed it Captain Obvious. And this is something I'm always working towards, is noticing the obvious and stating it for my students. So, you're saying, "Hey, I noticed you walked in and handed in your homework right away. Good remembering." So, it sounds kind of, it feels kind of funny to do that all the time. But to students, I think it can make all the difference. And even as adults, we really want to be noticed. We want people to notice our work. So, I think we're all trying to do that for students and for each other.
So, as Kim said, I was fortunate enough to go to RC1 in my first year of teaching, and it really has developed the way I teach. I think that going into it with this foundation, I've been able to grow in this manner and teach in this manner from the beginning, which I think has been really lucky. One immediate takeaway that I, the week we got back started doing was that I became more direct in my language. And I always thought I was direct. We used something called "take a break," so they were taking breaks. And I thought like that they would just make that connection based on the conversation. But I've changed it so that after I ask them to take a break, I relate it directly to our rules. So, again, I'm in kindergarten, so if like someone's just hugging someone else and saying, "Take a break," that's not safe. So, I'm immediately having them make that connection before they even go think about it. Because their "take a break" is a time to think about how to change it. And if they don't know what they did wrong, then that doesn't really make that connection for them. So, that's something that I immediately started coming back and doing, like making that connection for them so that they can think about that. One of the sessions I attended was the author of one of Responsive Classroom's book, How to Bully-Proof Your Classroom. And she just gave some really good tips and like things I never would have thought of. Like one of the major things was don't use peer-to-peer conflict, peer-to-peer talking to solve bullying. She said that you need to like immediately intervene and you can't use peer-to-peer because that just, it will escalate things. So, that was one major thing that she said. And then I just thought of some more ideas to bring more academic choice into my classroom that I think that I definitely, it's a strength, but just more ideas that I could do.
I'm a newer teacher at this school. It's my second year teaching, so I haven't had much Responsive Classroom training. So, going here was really exciting and eye-opening. My biggest takeaway was providing academic choice for the students in my classroom. That way that they're more engaged in what we're doing instead of saying, "You have to do this." They kind of get that attitude of like, "I'm not doing that and you can't make me." I also went to a presentation for students with behavior problems. And it kind of just taught me some more strategies to use in my classroom. And I've been trying to use those in my classroom. Some are working, some aren't, but it was good to have those, just to have in the back of my mind for future reference. And then, like Laura said, teaching children with anxiety, it's really difficult to focus and when you're nervous about something or think about something else. But now, knowing how to teach them and not just having them push it away is a really good thing to know. So, hopefully, I'll get more Responsive Classroom training, but this was a good first experience.
First of all, thank you for coming in and doing this presentation and filling us in. It's something I'm familiar with Responsive Classroom. I think it's really grown leaps and bounds since my children were at the elementary school. If you had another program back then. I'm curious on a couple of things. Can you just share some of the strategies? You've, a couple of you have mentioned teaching children with anxiety. It's something that we've heard from the guidance department in all three schools. Could you sort of just highlight some of the strategies that they've taught you?
Sure. So, one that jumped out of my, right away, was there was an example of a kindergarten child who had that fight or flight. And they created a safe space in the classroom, which the child actually created. The teacher went out and bought little Christmas lights. They had pillow choices for the child. They took two file cabinets and pushed them together so that there was a space in between. And that child really took ownership over that space. And so, instead of running out into the cluster in the school, he started running there, which was huge because he had been running all over the school. But because that teacher took the time to create that space with the child, the anxiety level went down and he had a safe place to go every time. So, that was one that popped out right away.
It really comes down to knowing your students because it could be a different solution for each one.
Right.
And I'm noticing that taking those extra five minutes, maybe you walk someone somewhere or they might even come to lunch with you, just getting to know them, it does make all the difference. Especially, we have 20 students. I know high school and middle school, they have a lot more students, so that could be harder to do.
But you're right, it kind of comes down to knowing your student.
They are also rolling out the middle school program for Responsive Classroom, which was really exciting news.
Cultural differences with our families, and you talked a lot about home connection and understanding the home background and getting to know each student individually. How has it been for you to work with families that come with different histories or different backgrounds or discipline? And some homes have different roles at home compared to school. So, I'm just curious because this approach, I know, is probably quite different from some home environments. So, how do you work with?
I had that. I've had that a couple of times where I think the playground routine could be different coming from other schools and other countries. So, you have to teach the other students how to help them. You have to keep reminding them and show them what is our social norm here and include the parents. I've had that exact thing. But there's no one fits all. You know, I did have a student last year who was really misbehaving physically. And I thought, "This looks like maybe it would be okay at his other school, this wrestling kind of thing." So, we just had to reinforce what we do here, and it worked.
And also, just knowing and understanding, I mean, honestly, that's why I moved to Costa Rica, so that I could learn a second language and understand that culture better or those cultures better or a few, just really knowing whatever culture or whatever situation. I mean, talking to the people at the church or talking to, you really have to put it all in.
And I think even going beyond just knowing the kids that you're teaching, there is a part in the school, in the classroom, that you're modeling. So, you're teaching expectations. So, all the kids are seeing the same expectations. So, even if it's different at home, they're learning what it is in school. So, they're not feeling, there's no like gap. They're all meeting and seeing the expectation and practicing it so that when it's their turn to do that, then they know what is expected.
That's consistent. Good. Thank you.
I just have to make a comment on something you mentioned about the Captain Obvious. And I had gone to a mass conference and it was interesting because I spoke with the superintendent. And they had Responsive Classroom with PBIS. So, they had that positive-based, you know, learning along with the Responsive Classroom. And I thought it was really interesting and really important to be able to give the students that positive feedback. You did a great job in recognizing that and letting them, you know, it, I think it really hits home for the students and they want to hear that good feedback and they want to be a good student, I think. And just to hear that reassurance, I think that makes them want to try harder, you know? But to have that positive feedback, I think, is really important. So, I was sort of wondering, is there a reason that at NES, and I know this is definitely a question more for Kim, but that we don't implement PBIS with the Responsive Classroom?
Can I, I would have to say that Responsive Classroom, if you're really doing Responsive Classroom correctly, you are giving lots of positive feedback, but only when it's genuine. So, you're only giving positive feedback when it is really there. Right. Responsive Classroom would argue that you don't want to say, "Oh, good job, Taylor," if she's not really doing a good job.
Right.
So, if you're really doing Responsive Classroom correctly, you are giving lots of positive feedback all of the time when people are doing whatever it is that they need to be doing project-wise, behavior-wise.
And it's the obvious thing, but it's nice to have that reminder. And it's nice, I think, for a student to hear that I'm doing something right or my teacher acknowledged me or recognized me. So, it's nice to hear that it does go hand-in-hand and that you are doing that with Responsive Classroom.
It really is 90% like front-loading and proactive. I don't know if sometimes the Responsive, it's called Responsive, but it really is mostly, you know, planning, planning good lessons.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you all. Thank you.
Maybe Nina knows, when did it start at NES, Responsive Classroom?
2006, right? It was when I, we were training.
2006? 2006?
Can we have Karen come up for technology, please?
I have a few slides to read, what I was talking about for those who might not be physically present tonight. I don't know if you want to sit or if you would prefer.
No, I'm fine.
Is it the same as what we had with that?
Yes. The slides have the same content, slightly different format so that they're more, you know, easily read by other people. Okay. Okay. I'm going to move it. I'm going to leave a little place in my presentation. Setting something up and, okay, there we go. So, basically, this is a presentation for the budget request for technology for FY 2018. This slide just essentially describes the cover page that went with the presentation. We're going to talk about appropriation graphs, any new requests that we may have, and then look at our financials briefly. Yes. Nope, I am missing a page. I'm missing my narrative. No, that's it. Sorry. Basically, the technology tomorrow is not making any new requests for fiscal year 2018. What that means is that we have formulated a budget within the budget directives that were defined by the school committee earlier in the budget season. So, we are not looking to increase the overall bottom line of the budget, but we have reallocated certain line items to make things work better within what we have, what we are requesting. We'll go over that a little bit more in detail when I bring up the numbers. One of the things to remember is that technology is an essential service for the organization. Without technology, without an adequate network infrastructure, we would not be able to function as a school organization. Everything runs on the network, from security to the HVAC system, to the keyless entry system, all of Diane's facility systems, our hosted services such as Google Apps for Education, our Aspen Student Information System. Everything we do is dependent on technology nowadays. Another thing to keep in mind is that our district network is continually evolving and growing to accommodate our constantly changing needs. We are effort, in a continual assessment of our network needs, what needs to be changed, what needs to be upgraded, what's working and what is not. We have done significant upgrades to the network in the past several years. We're now in the third year on final phase of our network infrastructure upgrade, and we are receiving a 60% discount from the federal E-Rate program to do this work. So, it's very affordable to us. The transition to one-to-one computing for grade six to 12, we did this in two years. And the increase in the use of our hosted services that I mentioned before have placed significant demand on our network, especially our bandwidth. It is planned that we will increase our network bandwidth speed next year from 200 megabits per second to 300. Looking at the pie charts, we are about 3% of the overall school committee budget, $827,555. If you look at the breakdown of what's within the If you look at the breakdown of what's within the technology budget, just over 50%, 55% to be exact, is payroll. Most of the rest of it is equipment and software, hardware and supplies with a smaller amount for professional development and, supplies, I'm sorry, I meant services was one of the major ones. Gives you a quick breakdown of how we spend our money within the department. Tried to make that as big as I could for those of you who don't have the handout or are watching from TV. Essentially, the two items that are outlined, and there are a couple of other smaller ones, are the items that have been increased from within our budget allocation. We are increasing professional services next year. I'm going to be outsourcing some of our more high-level networking tasks that Bob Thompson is currently performing in-house. And software goes up everywhere, every year. Our software subscription services increase in general on a yearly basis. There were some line items where we weren't spending our entire allocation. So in order to minimize transferring of funds throughout the year, we have rebalanced this based on our past three-year expenditures. So while it looks like we have not increased the bottom line, we have reallocated funds within the department budget. That should work very well for us next year. And that is the budget. If anybody has any questions, I have some inventory numbers if you're interested. And I'll have any questions about that.
Just so I can understand, I'm reading this correctly, Karen?
Sorry, behind you.
Yeah. And I'm, you got to talk from my back. Under the actual FY16 actual, under professional services, you've got $88,000, correct? Is that year-to-date actuals?
Yes.
Okay. And so then, current budget, you had budgeted $7,000 and you projected $80,000?
There was a temporary, one-time increase for part of the network infrastructure project under the E-rate funding, which is why that number is higher.
Okay.
That's not, yes, that's exactly. That's not an ongoing expenditure. Martin, did you want to chime in on that?
I just wanted to make a point, the 2016 are actuals for the whole year, not as of, because fiscal '16 is closed. '17, the middle budget, current, as of today, and '18 is the projected one.
Thank you, that's what I said, thank you.
The other thing that I would like to add, while we are not seeing significant increases in equipment that shows here, it should be noted that there is considerable new equipment going into the new school in terms of interactive whiteboards and, you know, computers and technology that are going into there, serving the same number of students that we have today. So I don't want the school committee to lose track of the fact that that doesn't show up in this budget because it's in the building project.
Right. And we're currently, I'm currently working with the project, the building project team on defining exactly what that technology is going to look like in the new building. So that is in a separate, as Mr. Cozart said, a separate budget.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, Mike.
Yep.
Thank you.
Tim, any questions or comments? Melissa?
I would be curious to hear the inventory numbers and how things are going with the transition for one-to-one in the high school.
Okay.
Does that lower some of the demand on desktop computers?
Yes, it does. And this just shows current inventory. But we are seeing a lower, the desktop inventory is gradually decreasing because we're not replacing it as quickly as we are recycling it out. And currently, this is based on my end-of-year presentation that I gave you, and these numbers are different. We now have 352 desktop computers as opposed to 1,382 Chromebooks. We're continually adding. We've purchased all-new for grade 10 this year and we've purchased about, I think we added, I forget how many exactly we added to the elementary school. But yes, those numbers are shifting. If you look here, you'll see the trend. We really didn't purchase any desktop computers last year and we haven't purchased any this year. We will probably be, we will be purchasing some for the intermediate school and we'll probably be replacing some administrative computers for FY18. But if you look at the trend, it's going down for traditional laptops and desktops and up for Chromebooks. We're also increasing our iPad numbers as we use them more in the pre-K through 2 grades.
And so the use of computers at the elementary school level, if they need, say, a laptop use, is it the cart system still and checking out and shared by each classroom?
We do have laptop carts. We also have cluster stations within each of the classrooms for them to do small group work, especially for ST math and programs like that.
Great.
The plan at the intermediate school is to provide a one-to-one environment with Chromebooks.
Okay. So that's grades three through five?
Yes.
And will they have access to be bringing them home or will they stay at school?
At this point, the plan is to keep them in school and have them signed out in the morning. They will each be assigned their own device, but they will not be taking them home.
Great.
Good plan.
Thank you very much.
Great. Who's next? Is Caitlin Dexter or is Diane? Diane's next?
Goodie.
It's just not digital.
Hi, Diane.
Hi, how are you? Well, unlike Karen, I am asking for additional funds and additional staff.
I have no idea why.
I don't either.
$72,000 square feet.
But we worked very hard to move people around and not overextend the request because we realized that it's a substantial request. I'm going to start off, facilities is 12% of the school committee's overall budget. And out of that 3.2-plus million-dollar budget, 46% of that is payroll, 26% is utilities, and the rest is supplies and services. So in my new request, NIS salaries, the increase we're requesting is $194,938. And that includes, we're going to move one employee to NIS from NES as a building supervisor and increase their salary, not fill his or her position at NES. We will move one night custodian from NES to NIS and not fill the position at NES. So we will leave a little gap there, but we're going to have less students and less staff. So we feel that this will be okay for now. We'll move, we need a night assistant supervisor for the night shift at NIS and we will need one additional custodian. So all in all, we're adding four people, three custodians and one assistant supervisor. And we're also requesting some additional funding. Last year, we were fortunate to get approved the network technician, who will also kind of be a halftime, hopefully, electrician. We'd like to increase that appropriation to $13,000 more in order to fill that position with a qualified person. Bob Thompson is retiring as of June 30th and we're going to have a hard time filling those shoes. We hope to start looking sometime in April and hopefully get some cross-training before he takes off for the summer for his camp. Bobby Sherlin is retiring as well, June 30th, so that will be a savings. There is a night custodian who wants to move to days. We're going to move him to days and we're not going to fill that position at night. Hopefully, we'll be okay. I know it's bare bones right now, but we really need to see how the new building functions and how we function. One of the custodians, the additional custodians we're hiring is going to be a floater, so to speak, kind of float in between NES and NIS and probably not do a seven to three, maybe do a nine to five. The night crew comes in at two, maybe they can do some work at night and do some, maybe help with lunches if they come in at, you know, nine or 10. My operating budget, Martin and I worked very hard cutting here and there and everywhere so we didn't have to increase, excuse me, ask for the increase of the entire 256,500. Our increase request is 102,294. We had to come up with a brand-new budget for the new school. It's a little bit tough. It's a different kind of fuel. We're using propane. The building itself is so energy-efficient, I'm not sure how much propane it's going to use, how much, you know, electricity, water. I kind of gauged it off of the elementary school a little bit, kind of did some calculations off of square footage. The only thing I'm really not sure of is the propane. The rest of it, I'm hoping that it's a pretty well-calculated guess. Mike and I worked hard on it as well, talked back and forth a lot, so.
Yeah, it's going to take a year of actuals for us really to project for the future properly. So it will be interesting to see after a year of operation, how close we were.
So we're going to have oil at the high school and the elementary school and propane?
Yes. We've installed four 1,000-gallon tanks for NIS and we've actually installed an extra conduit. If we ever wanted to change the boiler at NES, it would be a lot easier because now the conduit is run before all the site work went in. So we thought that made sense for that little change order to get that line in. We don't think we'll ever use up that four 1,000-gallon tanks, even if we were out of power for two weeks. So we think that that would be sufficient to run both schools if we needed to.
Good thinking.
Wouldn't there be a cost savings to run the elementary school on it also?
That's what I mean. If we change the burner over from the boiler to a burner.
How much would that pay you? Any idea?
We haven't done that projection yet. We're just thinking ahead and thinking that it would be a good thing to run that line now, you know, before the site work was complete.
That's good for me.
The tanks are in the ground.
Any questions? Melissa?
So on June 30th, we'll be filling the propane tanks and not the oil tanks.
I think we'll be filling them before that, but yes.
Pauline, any questions?
No.
No?
Thank you, Diane.
Jen, I just want to have one comment, it's not a question, but this was totally to be expected and planned for for this budget cycle. None of this is a surprise to any of us sitting here in the building project. So where this is a significant increase, it's not a shock because we are building a new building. And I think you've done a really good job of vetting out the priorities to stop it. And I do think Mike's right, we'll see what happens in a year.
Absolutely.
You know, what it takes. You can't build a flexible municipal budget. There's just no such thing.
No.
So, nice work.
Thank you, Martin, and thank you, Mr. Cozart.
Can you, actually, I have a quick question. Can you just tell me where we're at with the vestibule for the high school? I know that that was something that we had talked about.
I haven't, it has to be redesigned.
Okay.
I'll jump in. It's on hold with all the other projects that we've had going. The first one, and it's taken five times longer than we expected, is the middle school because we determined that was the point of entry into that school that was at greatest risk. That is, it's not 100% done because there's still some flashing problems that we're going to have fixed. But the next building would be the high school. We did have a design to make it in the interior. Based on how this last vestibule has gone, I think we're a little gun-shy as to just how much this is going to cost and whether it's better to go inside with so much glass or whether it's better to go outside. So we're going to take another look at that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Great, community school.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, so now I have to look towards Karen to ask how to turn this on. I'm not the tech-savvy person. She's my savior. I don't know where to go.
Pops up?
Oh, it popped. Thank you.
Okay, you can either use that or this.
All right, great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, see, this is the benefit of having Karen nearby. So I'm Caitlin Waddington, Director for Community School. Hello, everyone at home. Hopefully, the graphs are helpful to you and any questions that you might have, please stop me at any point. Currently, our projected budget for FY18 for the community school is $1,613,127. Our request for appropriation remains the same as last year, which is $400,000 appropriation specific plus another $65,000, which is actually not an appropriation. It's a final year of a two-year capital allocation that was voted in at town meeting. That capital allocation is approved to offset rental and operational costs. So next year is year two. So we're not asking for any more in that. And actually, we're about $43,000 less in budget than the previous year and then this current year, where we're at 1.659. So what we're looking at here in this first visual chart is the NCS expenses by program. So we have basically eight different revolvers that we utilize. And NCS programming has four different funding sources. So we have these different expenses and these expenses that you're seeing here are specifically related in majority to salaries, people. They're related to people and what they're able to provide to the community in creating a programming. There's supplies in there, there's equipment there as well, and those are in the breakdown in your revolvers that you have in your packets. But this is really what the expenses are for all those different departments. We have four revenue sources for all of our programs at the community school. We utilize, just to make sure this is on here, we utilize the revolvers, which is where all the fees for services, any collected revenue goes into revolvers in the municipal, in the municipal system with the town. We have gifts and donations. We have town appropriation. So those are three. The fourth is the grants or gifts that come, that we are not able to combine with this legally. We can't combine this, but there is a fourth one. And that's the grants that we're not able to fundraise, but if we apply for a grant and we receive those fundings, those funds, we keep those tracked in a separate account as well. So those are reflected in another part of your packet as well. We've broken down all of the different gifts and donations. So 7% of, 7% comes from fundraising, well, we don't fundraise, but from donations. Program income is 64%. Those are the fees. And then public appropriation this year is 29%. And it says 465, that 65,000 is, it's not appropriation. Again, let me just reiterate that that is a capital allocation. Early childhood, we have, our early childhood education program, we've broken down a couple of years ago into tracking it with another revolver. So we have Funding for Early Childhood Ed, which is an incredibly vibrant group of programming and group of, the team that provides this programming. So it's funded through the appropriation, it's funded through a grant through the Department of Early Education and Care, it's funded through local philanthropy that choose to give money to us, whether we request or not. They find us and want to gift some funds to our little ones and that is a wonderful service to the community. And then a small portion, we've started doing activities for fee rather than for free. The majority of early childhood programming is completely for free. There are just some components, some gymnastics, some things like that, that we have been redirecting to younger children and those funds we're putting into that 26317 revolver that you have in front of you. But I wanted to just reiterate that those were funded in a variety of different ways. So the We Whalers opportunity that we had to serve this year and taking that on, is funded in a completely separate revolver than early childhood education. We have kept that separate. We wanted to make sure, since this is an anomaly, this is not something that the community school will continue doing, although we are enjoying it, we didn't want to confuse that in future years, the early childhood ed. So we've kept. in future years, the early childhood ed., so we've kept that completely separate, in a separate revolver. And then, community recreation was a new revolver that was, not revolver, it's a town revolver. It's an agreement that we have with the town in Nantucket to manage the fields and parks and programming out there. And so, that's a collaboration that is continuing. We've been, it's been very successful. We have that agreement in place. DPW continues the responsibility of maintenance for the grounds and facilities, and it seems to be working well, and we're hoping to continue that going forward. So, that is a separate revolver. It's a town revolver. The agreement allows us to control what's paid out of that and helps to keep that separate, but it does fund one of the people that works for us, who's a key member. That's Blair Janelle with Teen Enrichment, Community Recreation, summer camp. Does a lot of different things. So, and then, this is the application of the appropriation. So, of the 450,000, oh, this is looking a little different. We have some, the majority of it, it goes to NCS administration because we don't charge for services and admin, but, so we do need that funding there, but the rest of it is split amongst the other areas. So, 20% to early childhood, 14% to adult literacy. That's the ESOL or HISA, any continuing career advancement, transitional adult ed., career education program, and also 10,000 to adult education enrichment, and 18, a little over 18,000 to the community pool, and a little over 41,000 or 9% to extended day, after-school enrichment. What that really does is offset the costs of, again, when I relate each of these departments to people. Several years back, we started acquiring the medical premiums for our employees. When we took those on, we also took on the, we took on the costs of that, and we've got an increase in appropriation for that, which was wonderful. So, we chose to split those costs and the appropriation across where the people are that are receiving those funds, so that's how we tried to do that and differentiate. So, we have very successful programs, but we also want to make sure we support them with the appropriation, even though they're successful. So, here's a good example of the 20-year historical comparison of NCS appropriation and participant fees and donations. So, the bottom part is the appropriation. So, back in 1997, we received 237,000 in appropriation, and then we created 483, 480,000 in revenue. And as the years progressed, the revenues increased, as has the appropriations gone up and down. We've remained pretty steady. I want to say, I don't see the percentages here, but about 25% to 27% appropriation has been supporting the program, and it allows us to keep the program fees lower so that more people can participate in the program. Across the board, we have every type of person interested in taking classes and participating activities and connecting. That's why we're here, to engage, strengthen, and connect the community, and so the appropriation is pretty key in doing that. If we didn't have that, we would not be able to provide what we are able to provide on a regular basis, so we really appreciate that. Of note, again, in 2012-13, which is not on here, but right before the 13-14, that is when there was a jump of $75,000 for the medical premium. So, while we've had more appropriation, costs came with that. So, just wanted to make sure we don't forget that little flip. Any questions so far about anything? So, this is historically the chart that I've been giving you for the last few years, showing the difference, difference or increase, or hopefully increase, in community engagement. So, we've got the numbers, but then we've got, what are the programs doing? Who's coming? We're here to engage, strengthen, and connect, so who's coming to our activities? Historically, the first column is the early childhood education drop-in. Those are number of people that come to our early childhood center, number of children. And so, that's a very strong program, so in FY13, we were approaching 2,000. We went way over the mark in 2014. The following year was the year that the early childhood center was closed here and moved out to Candlewick Corner at the very end of the year, so we didn't put them in. It would have been low, it would have been numbers, but you wouldn't have been able to see them. But we were open from the end of May and June of that fiscal year, but it was beautiful out, so people weren't accessing it. But it was a great resource to have, and we were ready to go in to the next year. But then, the following year jumped back up in FY16 to 1,500. And that's just the early childhood. Previously, also, the next, the next group of numbers, the early childhood classes, those are the numbers that we typically had for you. I didn't have, we didn't have it broken down by participants, and so that's something different. I wanted to keep in what you saw in past, but the next line, where there's only the two, past years, that's where we're showing the number of participants to those classes, and that mirrors or matches what we were tracking for the other programs, which is the number of participants. So, early childhood education, as I said, a thriving, engaging, vibrant program, you know, the FY15, the year that we had only, and this was just only 56 Center, when we didn't have our early childhood center to run programs, we had close, you know, we had over 1,500, close to 2,000 participants coming to the class in one fiscal year. So, I think that was pretty amazing. We were very fortunate that Remain supported us with that building, and we were able, it was a great way to engage people in the activities in the program and learn about 56 Center and come downtown to see what was going on. And then, when we implemented the early childhood center the following year, back in, again, people were using that, but that didn't stop them from coming downtown or to our programs because we focus our early childhood programs, classes continue at 56 Center, and if you look in that, we're at 2,500 participants this past year, and still 1,500 hitting the ECC. So, we're excited about that. We feel like we are the gateway to the school. That's part of our mission, part of our strategic plan, is how can we engage people early and have them, one day, reflect back and look at their, you know, registration, or their registrar, their transcript, when they were in, maybe it's We Whalers now, or, you know, maybe it was Mommy and Me, maybe it was the Play With Me group, or Read Around the Alphabet, and then they're in the pool, and they're doing the, they're enrolled in this class, or they're enrolled in that class, and then they're in adult ed., and then they're taking ballroom dancing. I mean, it's just exciting to us that we can see across all generations and all ages. So, those are, that's the primary difference there. Child and teen enrichment, staying strong. One of the things that I've been noticing is our revenue's going down a little bit, but our engagement's staying pretty steady, and I attribute that to actually our YELL program and our Nantucket High School Business Initiative. So, we're having a lot more students involved in the programs, and we're offering some free programs. So, you know, I think that's, that's pretty key. We're looking at other strategies to increase the revenue in that area. I think that'll be happening with our newest employee as well. Blair Janelle's been fantastic at generating exciting activities that teens are interested in participating in, and Katie Manchester, our newest children's enrichment instructor or coordinator, she's just, she has ideas beyond ideas on how to engage children and families in some activities that are school-age-related, so we're excited to see that continue to grow. But I do, I'm noticing that, that shift. Summer adventure camps going strong, staying pretty steady. We have some very creative ideas on the horizon for FY18, including just some specialty camps that really increase numbers and revenue for us in those specific specialty camps, and some of that is the tween-focused camps, some tech camps, purchasing some curriculum or, you know, canned programs, but getting the right instructor in that and being able to do some, you know, specialty afternoon activities when there's a gap, that people are looking for something for their kids, and also looking at summer bridge programs for our teachers that need something in that two-week period when we don't have a lot on the island for them. So, that's, those are some areas that we're looking at being creative with some solutions and bringing in some different vendors. Then, we go over to adult education enrichment. That's looking, there's a big drop there. I'm going to attribute that to, we have a change. We've got some fantastic new leadership in the adult education, Cheryl Reichwein, along with Lindsay Picas, who is her, is our marketing coordinator and her, Cheryl's assistant program coordinator. Like, I'm calling them the dynamic duo. They have some very exciting ideas, some revenue streams that Cheryl, in her experience with working with Cape Cod Community College for the past four years as an adjunct professor, she has these collegial relationships and understanding of the approach on how to engage different community members and set up a system that is really going to focus on the educational path, different educational pathways for our adults. So, it may, starting from wherever they are and bringing them to the next level, whatever that might be. And so, she has that brain for that kind of academia that is different than my brain, and so I'm excited to see what's happening with that. Also, we ventured down the nonprofit support arena and hired Janice Kinder and have done, have really made some headway in creating some energy around supporting nonprofits on Nantucket, listening to our community and knowing that there are so many nonprofits, and what kind of staff development are they needing, what would they like to see happen, and we've been going to the source, getting that from them, and creating solutions from that, and people are seeing that result, seeing the immediate result of that. So, we're excited about seeing the numbers change for next year. It is a foundational year. It's a different focus from enrichment to education, but we're not stopping the enrichment, so I want to emphasize that. We still have the enrichment, and we have a lot of community support for that as well. Adult literacy, very low, right? Very low numbers. We had over 55 people already in our adult education ESOL class, so our English classes, and we have, that's actually double the number from last year, so it's not on here, but that's something that's important because I think that the energy is being generated from the conversation and the marketing that's been going on for it as well. I also want to emphasize that just because the numbers are low, that's part of why we're here. It's, it might be a low number, but it's a huge impact, those 55 people that are going to be coming to the class, so I think it's very important that we remember that, that that's part of what community school is. Might be low numbers for engagement, but if it's making a difference for that, for those few people, that will help them get to the next level, that's why we're here. So, and then, the community pool for the youth and the adults. This is exactly what we gave last year with this extra year, and Jim and I were concerned, so we wanted to break down the information more so, and that's why you had a follow-up packet for the pool. So, the numbers are still huge. We're still up in the, you know, we're still up at close to 3,000, definitely over 2,500 in engagement at the pool. But when we broke it down, what we realized was, this isn't, it was comparing apples to oranges, so that's what's, that's what's next. So, for the community pool for the children, youth engagement, the first band is the drop-ins, and so, they're pretty, they're pretty steady. I mean, there's a drop there, but it's not of concern. Our teens, kids are harder to address with, or to track with drop-ins. The swim team in the middle is staying steady. This year, we have 130 kids in dolphins, and so, this is across the board, pretty, pretty steady. And then, the, the last group is the, I'm sorry, it's the swim, fitness, and lifeguard classes, so all the different classes that we, that we offer to the children, that's engaged there. So, pretty, they've climbed up, and now we're kind of level. I like using the word that we're pretty saturated at the pool, because it's a fun pun, and so that's part of why we were concerned about the numbers and the big drop, because when you walk in there, there's never a time that there aren't, that it's not an act, it's a very active, busy space. Oops, wrong button. The pool for the adults, the drop-ins, big drop, pretty steady on the swim, fitness, lifeguard classes, and the membership is, you know, slight drop. And I'm, we've broken down the membership as well. I'm, I do believe, because we really, really were looking at, okay, when did the drop start? What's happening? And we do believe that part of the issue could be related to the door, the, you know, the change in policy of having the school locked during the day changed who we have staff welcoming at the front door. So, now, when people come in during the school day that are adults, when they come in, it's, it's almost a self-sign-in rather than being greeted and being tracked. And so, I think we're missing some data, that that is a portion of it. Another part of it is that this past year in particular, we were very happy for Ainsley Ellis, who was stolen by the school, and headed over to NES to teach, and that, and support the school there, and that's, that's really great. We really are happy for her. When we lose a key employee who was a core member of that does impact, and we had some medical issues for some staff as well. So, I would say the last four months of FY16, right? Yes. That was not, the data collection may not have been there, and then the upselling of the memberships probably wasn't as strong as it could have been in those last few months because that's typically when, and Jim's here today, so he can answer any questions and jump in if I'm wrong, but it's typically when there are a lot of three-month memberships that are sold, and, let me do it again. When we look at the pool senior memberships, they, they went up. For senior one-year memberships, they stay, they went up for senior three-month memberships. For family memberships, the three months went up, the one-year went up. And then, when we look at the adult individual is where we see it dropping, and that's typically happening. Those memberships are typically happening at the beginning of the season or right up to the season and getting through the summer, so we think we may have missed some people there, and we have some remedies in mind on how to do that. Questions? Melissa, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just, you know, if you go back to your other slide where you were showing the youth in the pool.
This one or the next one?
The next one. So, you, we see all these, you know, high numbers for youth enrollment, and then you go to the next slide, and you start to see a decrease in adult, particularly drop-in, and, you know, as a, as somebody who likes to use the pool, because it is being used, and to your point, saturated by the youth programs, I think the limited options, the timing has become very limited for when the adults can actually access the pool. So, I, I think that has to factor into the consideration of the impact of adult membership. We can't, the pool can't be open 24 hours a day because that's impossible, or maybe...
And it's not healthy. It wouldn't be healthy. It wouldn't be healthy.
Jim's pretty awesome, so I don't know, maybe it's possible. But I know as a consumer, the windows of availability for me to be able to use the pool are further and fewer between because there are so many classes for kids, and so I think you have to see that graph balance out in your equation of what the drop is also.
Right. And, and I think Jim's been quite creative in finding those windows to fit in that extra lap time for adults, but that is hard as a consumer to say, well, I'm not exactly sure when I'm going to be able to access it, so that may play into it. The different type of locker room is different than what they can get somewhere else as well, so that may also factor into just the amenities, I guess, of what people are interested. I think that the price is quite competitive.
But there's not that many other options for lap swimming. I mean, you couldn't, you can't join another club and lap swim anywhere else.
I'm maybe thinking about summer. I'm probably thinking summer.
Yeah, okay.
Because I think that, I think the individual memberships that got hit, I think that hit us in the summer, but that, I might be wrong on that, and that's something that we're looking at.
That was just going to be my point, was just the club membership and that probably having an impact during the summer, I would think, maybe.
That's what we've been thinking, but we've got a number of different things to look at, but I think breaking it down. Jim, did you want to jump in with anything? Because I see you moving.
No, I think to Melissa's point, and the numbers aren't reflected in this presentation, but that lap time during the day is, it is few and far between, and we try to squeeze it in, and that's because we're seeing grades three through 12 as part of their fee curriculum in the school, and with each grade level comes a different bell schedule, so each month changes from month to month, so we try to fill the gaps as best we can without a, without a lap. Speaking towards the membership and the summer opportunities, if you look back '09 to now, I think there's been a steady growth in more options on island. It doesn't happen overnight. I think it's time to cultivate, and those visitors coming who want to swim their laps, five, six years ago, we were doing the show in town, but if there are members at the Westmore Club, there's your option. So, we're not getting those drop-in numbers, we're not getting those memberships. Also, I think it's key to point out, back five, six years ago too, the whole community was triathloning. Everybody was in this whole health kit, and I'll, you look at the... Everybody was in this whole health kit and all big, look at the, Nantucket Triathlon opened up there at Benon Island. So that really bolstered our numbers. As that starts to kind of decline a little bit or level off, we're starting to see that as well. If you look at the money in terms of our membership from this year, 16 to this year, 15, we actually increased $2,000. Numbers don't show that by the membership sold, but I think we're consolidating memberships. So now somebody buying two, three-month memberships, they're just getting that one, one year now. But yeah, it's definitely something, there's, I think there's a lot of different factors at play here. There's no one answer to why there is a significant drop, but I think you can look towards that drop in before adults.
And I think your point though, Jim, about the schedule would be really interesting next time you guys present these numbers because it's not that the pool's not being used, it's that the times are very full of servicing the community in other ways. And maybe they're not revenue generating ways like physical education classes throughout the winter, which is really important. So, you know.
That would be nice to see.
I just, as a, as an add-on to your story, I think it is important for the community to understand that the pool is active all day long. And part of the reason why there's limited lap time is because we're servicing the community in other ways.
All right. Now, I think that's an excellent point and we can definitely get that scheduled for you. It changes every month. We can put that together.
Yeah, I don't, I'm just saying.
At the time of present.
For next year.
Sure, sure.
Just as a thought.
But this is, this is how the community school was birthed. It was birthed by the need for a pool and a high school and adult, and the adult ed piece of that. So our primary focus with the pool is to teach kids how to swim. And that's part of the core, that's the core part of, of community school and the community pool programming. So you're right, that's something that we haven't really emphasized and we haven't put those numbers in that way, but we can certainly do that going forward.
Thank you. Questions, Doug?
No, I'm just thinking, we've got a great basement in the intermediate school.
I'm sorry, what?
It's like a bowl. I would do that.
We have a great basement in the intermediate.
Once again, there goes storage.
No, that's for the bowling alley, right?
It's not, it was for the, for the storage.
And we, we've really, we really enjoy what we do. We've got an incredible team of people that are excited about what's happening, what's coming in store. And we appreciate the opportunity to serve the community. So we, and we appreciate your input and guidance along the way.
Thank you. Pauline?
No questions, just great job.
Thank you.
The team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim, thank you as well for adding in.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
All right, moving on to policy IKF amendment, graduation requirements. This is a draft for everybody to look over and read and let us know if you have any questions or comments, something that we'll vote on next meeting.
We'll, we'll bring this back. This is, this reflects the addition of financial literacy as required, not just an elective. This is something we've talked about for some time. The only thing that, that John and I would like to point out is that this won't begin with the immediate senior class or junior class. It probably would be a requirement that would start with the class of 2020 or 2021. So just, just so that you understand that, we're excited about it. It does increase essentially the mathematics credits to four and a half, which, which isn't a bad thing either.
No, I think it's great. Would this be offered in all grades, do you, do you think, or will it be?
I'm, I'm going to speak to that. We've talked about it and we really think that it's a better course for juniors and seniors. They need to be a little closer to that, to the future, to.
To the next step.
To really understand and be invested in that course. So that's what we would anticipate.
Are you looking at other .5 classes to, to balance that out?
There are some things that students can, can take. There's been some discussion at what point we might reinstitute a, a separate civics class. So there are, there are a lot of things that are being discussed.
I think it's great. I think it's definitely something that will benefit our students. And I love it that you're putting it in as a requirement because I know students in the past have tried to take the class, but because of their schedule, haven't been able to. But it's good, good info for our kids.
Yeah, I just. Thank you. Any comments from the public? No comments. Committees discussions and votes to be taken. May I have a motion for approval for Chris Maury as NCTV Board Representative to School Committee?
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, I guess not. Vote of acceptance of grant award in the amount of $858 from the Nantucket Land Council to the Nantucket High School Chemistry Department and Mr. Patrick Gregorich for the purchase of equipment for photo spectro, I can't even say it, photo spectroscopy, I can't say it.
Spectro photometer.
Thank you, studies.
Some move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Can I ask what those are for, please? I've got to ask what they're for.
I took CP Chemistry, I wouldn't know.
Okay.
I'm going to look.
I can't say that. Okay, all right. Well, thank you though for the grant award. Thank you.
I see Mr. Horton.
Oh, Mr. Horton, can you please tell me, explain what that is, the equipment that we're accepting?
Pretty sure. It's too bad that Jim left. If you flash a liquid, you can get a reading back of what's in the liquid.
Oh.
Elements.
Wow.
And they now have the pools where you can flash a pool and give back different levels of different chemicals in the pool.
Wow, that sounds fantastic. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. All right.
We don't know if he's telling the truth.
He's on TV now, so hopefully.
That sounds good.
May I have a motion to approve November 15th, 2016 meeting minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to approve transfers and invoices?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the superintendent's enrollment report.
Just shows that we've gone down one student from November and although there's some movement. And Logan did pick up on the request by Zona at the last meeting to show the number of students withdrawn and enrolled at the bottom. So you can see NES had in, over the course of the month, five withdrawn and six enrolled. And CPS, one withdrawn, two enrolled, and then the high school was seven and four. So that's sort of a new piece that, that we've added. Thank you, Logan. And, and if you want me to go on to.
Yes, on the horizon, please.
We will bring back policy IKF for the next meeting. Next meeting is usually a bit longer because we have a lot of budget presentations. We'll have the elementary school, middle school and the high school, as well as athletics, central office, including sped and ELL and curriculum. So, and then usually we begin that second December meeting with Libby, who will present to us what she has presented to the Board of Selectmen and have an idea of what our appropriation will be. We will not have a, a presentation on either Sparks Road or Bartlett Road. I haven't had anybody from the town get back to me on that. It's probably just as well because that's a pretty long meeting as is. And then January, we have some things scheduled, but we're, we're in pretty good shape. We did have quite a few students who were recognized for Regional Musical. I think if anybody went to the concert the other night, it was a great job by, by the chorus group at the high school and the band. And we've had members of both groups have made all Cape and so we're, we're very proud of that. I just, while I'm proud of all of them, I was sort of, Sonia Martel knocked my socks off with her mallet work and I call it a xylophone. I'm sure it's not a xylophone, but.
Marimba.
Boy, she was really something special. So, great job. I don't know that I've enjoyed a, a concert as much as I did that one.
Oh, that's so great. That's so awesome to hear.
Thank you. Anything else?
I think that's it.
All right. Any subcommittee work group committee?
I think the only thing I would make reference to, we were going to have a dress code committee meeting today. Zona could not make that, so we're working to reschedule that and trying to get some feedback from the administrators because they have to reach out to council members and students. Maybe it will happen for next Thursday, but we're, we're not really sure just yet.
Can you just remind me who's on that committee?
Yes.
I'm supposed to be.
Zona and Jen and each of the three principals, and they have invited council members, and they are John.
Pam Goddard. And Lucy Bursette. And Gerald Rocky.
And then.
Melanie Saban from my school council. And we're not going to bring a student to this first.
Yeah. So it's, it's in the works and as you heard tonight, the policy committee has took, has taken up not only that policy, but has been talking about homework. And there was another issue and I can't remember what it was off the top of my head, but there's work going on behind the scenes.
Mike, it would be lovely even if it, in some kind of written update. So I know we have very busy meetings, but just curious how the changeover in grading at CPS went in the first term with the sixth grade getting the standards-based report card. That was the first time that was really happening. It'd be nice to know what the, how that worked and.
Okay.
You know, how, how the parents were feeling about it. We can kick the can a little bit, it doesn't have to be right away, but.
Yeah, next meeting seems pretty busy.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Sierra, any updates?
Uh, winter formal is in a week and a half.
Are you still looking for chaperones?
We have a good amount, but always looking for chaperones for the dance.
Yeah, I might be there.
Oh, fantastic. It's at the VFW.
Oh.
So that's awesome.
Oh, you're.
Our bulletin board is up. Our topic is Make A Wish, so you can just go up and write a little, write a little wish on there. It can be anonymous or you can write your name. And today, actually, I went to my SIRSAC meeting in West Bridgewater. It stands for Southeastern Regional Student Advisory Council. And so we have two work groups, like of different kids from different schools around the southeast region. And we're working on like school climate and administration and student involvement with administration. I can't really talk about it because we haven't, we haven't finalized anything yet, but we're going to be finalizing stuff soon, so.
That's great.
I have one other thing, if I may.
Sure.
I'm sure many people at these tables and in the audience have walked around downtown and have seen the trees that were decorated by the elementary school. It's a wonderful tradition. I was in a board meeting at the NHA and I had somebody lean over and show a picture to me of one of the trees. This was before there was any voting on, on them. And she actually had a little tear in her eyes as she was showing it. It was a tree that had been created by Mrs. Ladder and Mrs. Holgate's class, third grade. And the theme, and there was a sign that they basically said, please take what you need. And then underneath the tree were shells with things like peace and hope and good health and it was.
Joy.
Joy.
I think joy.
Oh my goodness, it just, it gives me shivers right now.
Happiness.
It was really special.
It was really special.
Yeah. So, and I think your daughter was in one of those.
Yes, and I actually got to help volunteer making, well, watching and supervising as they made the ornaments.
So I, I got to be a youth judge last week, which was very difficult. But I have to, to just tack on to that, Mike, the loving kindness and diversity were strong themes all throughout. And I think that we saw some beautiful trees that represented in really creative ways all of our children from all over the world. And it was, I think, eye-opening to some of the visitors to see those trees and understand that Nantucket's student body is so diverse and culturally rich. So it was, it was really beautiful again.
It was very special. Thank you.
Same question.
Sure.
You had mentioned the Make A Wish board and I just happened to see it tonight when I came in. Can you just tell us what direction the student council gives to the students? Is it, are they told about it? Are they asked to put things up? And what is it that you're looking to?
Well, we like, we tell, I, I tell my peers about it and it's really kind of just when you walk by in the mornings, like you look, or when you're going to class or something and you look at it and you're like, oh, and you see everyone else has written stuff and so you just go up.
Does that inspire them or to.
Yeah.
Give some time to think about their wishes?
Yeah, and it's for like other people to see like what other people want a wish.
And how's that been received? Good?
Good. I just got up this week, so.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't in school today either because I was at my meeting, so I didn't get to see all of them, so I'm going to go look after them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Birthday, Dr. Leffler.
And happy birthday, Dr. Leffler.